Don, we have a few board members that are trying to get in, so just be a second. Okay.
I'm not gonna mess with it, because there's, there's... I poked you out, didn't I? I'm sorry.
No, you're good. I hadn't started that yet.
There's gotta be a setting in here that says, it's something about muting or monitoring yourself, that we've got to...
In mute.
No, in the sound control panel for the computer.
Jackie, just let me know when we're all set, and we have our board members, and I'll call the meeting to order.
Okay, I'm working with them right now.
If you turn that off, then we don't have any of the remote people. They're not able to hear anywhere.
That's the only thing I have to choose.
Okay, I don't see what I'm looking for.
The only other thing I can think of...
Bye. So, Don, Alicia's on, and then Craig and Scott should be here momentarily.
Thank you, Jackie. Are we all set, Jackie?
The only one is Craig, and I would think he's coming in shortly.
Okay, I'll wait until 6:35, and then I'll call the meeting to order.
You're good, Don.
Okay, I would like to call the regular board meeting to order this Monday, October 19th, 2020. And we will start that with a pledge of allegiance. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Brandon, will you do roll call?
Can you hear us?
Dottie Dillsay. Abby Green.
Yes.
Dawn Gordon.
Here.
Seth Baxter.
Here.
Craig Corbin.
Yeah.
Alicia Brownson.
Here.
Brandon Holting's here. This is Dottie Dillsay.
Here.
Thank you, Brandon. I just would like to remind everyone the norms of collaboration. And, um... Kevin has a little bit to share that something, he spoke with Legal this week. Kevin, would you like to go ahead?
Don, before he starts, I have a question.
Okay.
I just sent it into chat. I wonder if we'll be able to see the stage closer. Right now, I cannot see who is on stage or the PowerPoint.
No, you're, you're, this is as good as you're gonna see on the, on the picture. If somebody's doing a presentation, they will present from Google Meet, and you'll see it there.
Did you hear that?
Dottie, did you hear the information from Tammy?
Tammy, we can't zoom in. But if somebody's presenting, that would be presented through Google Meet, and you'll see that on your screen.
Thank you. Okay, Don, do you, uh... Want me to go ahead and share?
I couldn't hear you, Kevin, I'm sorry.
I was asking, did you want me to go ahead and share? Information.
Yes, please.
So, had legal counsel make a clarification on the use of a mask when you are in person in our meetings? And was told that the interpretation of being able to broadcast, that only when you're talking, or as you're doing public comments, are we able to have anyone that is presenting without a mask. But all others, everyone that's in the audience, all of the board members, that we have to keep our masks on at all times. And that that interpretation is based on the Michigan Health Department from Michigan. Thank you.
Moving to 1.05, the addenda. Any changes on the addenda?
No.
Okay, we'll move forward to 2.01, comments from the public.
Okay, we have four people that are going to speak tonight, two online, two in person. And we can start with Teresa Wright White, I'm sorry, can't talk tonight. Teresa White, if you could go ahead and unmute and speak.
Members of the board, let me start with one very important statement. Teachers are not essential workers. We do have an alternative to working in person in a way that works for both students and teachers. Being in a county and state in a critical category, we do have a way to keep students and teachers safe. As has been mentioned a couple of times, to say we need to have a risk benefit mindset, wherein teachers and students are put at risk for a few unhappy families, 26 is what was stated at the last board meeting, out of our approximately 2,000 students, is beyond reason. Board members, you are willing to risk the lives of our 26 students, or of our students and staff for 26 unhappy families? You talk about letting the parents decide whether or not we're in person. So are you going to let the staff decide if they want to be in person? We don't allow parents to make the decisions about the curriculum we offer, the school calendar, our behavior policies, sports policies, or any number of things. Why do we now say that they get to make the decision about whether or not students and teachers will live or die? Again, our community is allowing students together together, non-masking. And then you want to force the teachers to be in small, poorly ventilated rooms with them. You asked, if we're allowing students to participate in sports, then why are they not in school? The answer is, that's a choice the parents are making. If they're participating in sports, you're saying that academics are not as important. Numerous schools around here have already closed down after opening. Successfully controlling this virus in a secondary environment has yet to be done well. In our own community, OCC also stated that they will be only online for the remainder of the year. A major consideration for you should also be the time of year. In a couple of weeks, it's Halloween, when we know kids will be banding together. Couple of weeks beyond that, it's Thanksgiving, again, when we know students and families will be gathering in groups. Couple of weeks beyond that, and it's Christmas. Most definitely a time when families and students and their friends will be close together, and all of which will be occurring inside. Spread will absolutely increase during this time period, and again, it's very unfair to put the staff at risk by putting them in that germ breeding environment, and then taking it home to their families. Our county is back in the red, outbreak level, based on our number of positive cases. Those numbers will not be going down in the near future as we're moved indoors. Once an outbreak has occurred, nothing can be done to make it right again for those who have tested positive. Our families may be affected for a lifetime. Or if a family member were to die, or someone in the family is now considered a long-hauler, then may have health concerns for the rest of their lives that affects how they live and how they provide for their families. The Health Department just recently put out a statement that they recommend schools not increase the number of students that are currently in person at this time. Bell Creek Schools, unlike you, just to name a couple, are now following their advice. 27% of the total confirmed positive COVID-19 cases have occurred in just the last 18 days in our county. We've had positive cases in our buildings, and we've had almost 100 people that have had to quarantine thus far. This decision you are about to make may cause lifelong harm that cannot be corrected. Please show our students, families, and staff that you truly care about them. Many people talk about our Penfield family, so please, keep your families safe. Keep us virtual for the next nine weeks. We need you to follow the science. We need you to care about the staff. We need you to care about the students. And we need you to do the right thing, and continue to keep our staff and students safe with virtual learning. Thank you for your time, Tina Fleischer and Teresa White.
Thank you, Teresa. Our next speaker is Kalen Boudreaux, and I believe she's online, so you can go ahead and unmute Kalen.
First off, I would like to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak at this board meeting. With every school building being different, I would like to focus on the high schools' virtual learning specifically. My name is Kalen Boudreaux. I'm a junior at Penfield High School, as well as the Battle Creek Area Math and Science Center and KCC dual enrollment. While the ultimate goal is to be back in school, we can't base going back on personal success. The return to the classroom should be based on the best choice for everyone's safety and health. I listened into the last board meeting, and it made me feel like the school system and staff are not getting enough credit for how virtual learning is actually going. Students need to start taking responsibility. Parents do not necessarily always see what is going on behind the scenes. And I understand, while it can be difficult to watch your students struggle, it is sometimes needed for them to grow. While I can agree that the workload in virtual learning can be heavy, the teachers are giving us all of the resources and guidance to accomplish our assignments. Every one of the teachers has been super flexible and lenient if you communicate with them individually. But that is your responsibility. There was talk about removing the labor policy due to COVID. While some students are legitimately struggling, there are others who are going to take advantage of this. For example, if somebody gets 100% for turning in their assignments late, or right before the end of the quarter, what do students who turn in their assignments on time get from this? And what happens when a bunch of students hold off until the last minute to submit all of their assignments? Is this fair to the teachers who have to try and grade like this? With no consequences, there is no responsibility. We as students need to be held accountable. We are on our pathway to becoming an adult. When we moved to virtual schooling, everyone was put on the same playing field. This is all new to everyone. My student learns better in person, is what a lot of us are hearing. But just because your student learns better in person, does not mean that they are unable to succeed in other ways. There are so many resources out there to help with all areas of learning. Our school even set up its schedule to make time for one-on-one learning with teachers. If a high 30% of students are failing at least one class at the high school level, what are these students doing about it? Are they going to these meetings or contacting their teachers? Are they using all the resources that the teachers have provided? Are they contacting their peers for help? We can't blame the teachers for something that is the student's job. No teacher is going to fail a student who is working super hard and making sure that they are doing the best they can and communicating to let them know their struggles. Everyone would love to be back in a school setting. And if that is feasible, then I'm 100% for it. But until it is, we need to be acceptant and grateful for the staff and work being put in to make this tough situation the best that it could be. We need to start spreading more positivity. Thank you for your time, Kalen Boudreaux.
Thank you, Kalen.
There we go. All right, our next two people are here in person. So our first one is Kevin Rostin.
Thank you, board members, for taking the opportunity to let me speak. My concern is that my son was an A and B student, and went from an A and B student to a failing student. And I reached out to administration, reached out to teachers, had Zoom meeting conferences. I spent my time actually making sure my son is doing his work. We had reached out, we had Mr. Simmons reach out and give us information saying that teachers could give this instruction by Zoom me, Google, whatever form they want. Doing that, that makes it hard for students, especially being a ninth grader going into high school situations, is to understand there is a difference between platforms. These different little minute things that you think are simple can be very devastating to children. As we progress through the season, through the season of football, through the season of our first semester here, I have watched my son give up. My son was always the one that sat there, and he thrived at wanting to be in the science Olympia. He wanted to do extracurricular stuff. Now he doesn't want to do any of that. One of the problems that I see, and I've had this conversation with Mr. Faber, and with Mr. Hutchins, with Mr. Steele, is when you do, when you, when a teacher gives an assignment, a teacher does not grade the assignment, it is still counted as a zero until that teacher grades that assignment. When they do not do that grading properly and effectively, that now makes that kid ineligible for football. That brings that student down, and puts that student to be one of the casualties on the side of the road of this school. And being a failing student, being a parent that said, that I heard last week during the meeting, that Mr. Faber said that the board, or not the board, the administration was reaching out, the counselors were reaching out, teachers were reaching out. As that parent that had a son that was failing, failing four classes, mind you, I never received one phone call from a teacher, not an email, not nothing. We had to make some serious corrections. I ended up getting Ms. Fox to help us. Ms. Fox should be commended for the extra effort she was putting in. I had one teacher during conference, actually I had to give her koodles beyond koodles. And that was Ms. Pedalen. Ms. Pedalen actually, and during her classes, tells the kids, "Reach out. If you're feeling overwhelmed, let me know." Not others, not a single teacher. I'm a third shifter. I stay out in the mornings, make sure my son does his homework, and he's on when he needs to be on. And make sure he's not doing things that he's not supposed to be. Being, with that being said, a third shift parent, you asked us parents to be more involved with the school, with our kids. Get involved and show that. Now that we are involved, the families, us parents, feel like our voices are not being heard by the board or by the administration. When we say that, or when I say that, is if you want us to hear you, and you want, you're saying you're hearing us, remember this, when you're, when you hear this failure rate of 30% from last week, where they plus five or minus five, five to 10%. Okay, when you figure that all out, that's a lot of students that are failing. And most of those, if you would actually go back and look, I would almost, I could almost say that was probably a new freshman coming into the school, because that's a whole new learning environment. When you give a freshman an eight-hour orientation for in-person learning, and then you turn around and you only give a 20-minute video for online learning, you set that kid up to fail and fail miserably. Because they don't understand the resources that they need. They're coming from a school where they don't take their Chromebooks home. They didn't have all the commitment of, we had to do our assignments online and get them back in. At the high school level, they're, they've always been one after the other, online, and they turn them in online. That sets a failure rate. That sets a huge standard of failure. And as far as the allowing a teacher to give it in any way that they want, Mr. Simmons, this is a question I would like you to come back and give me some input on. As a corporation, any corporation out there, how many different platforms do they use to communicate? I can tell you, it's one. They choose one. A worldwide organization will choose one platform. That makes it simple. That is one huge thing that I've heard. I've talked to many parents about this, especially freshmen. I watched the freshman football team in Week Five, when they checked eligibility. Only had, what, nine people, 10 people max that was eligible? It's a 50% failure rate on a freshman football team. If it's a 50% failure rate, and I talked to Mr. Steele, and he said a week before he knew that. If he knew a week before, why wasn't he raising a flag to you, Mr. Simmons?
So we want to make sure that we stay within that three minutes. Appreciate it.
That's all I have for now. I'll be back for the next one.
Our last speaker is Jeff Wolfberger. I said that right. I'm close.
Ladies and gentlemen on the board, I come to you tonight not to repeat everything that your community has reached out to you about pertaining to a choice for in-person schooling, but to ask you why. Why are you not listening? Why are you not acting on most of our students' needs? A choice is all we're asking. I sat for three days collecting almost 500 signatures of parents, students, concerned citizens. Almost 500 signatures of people that voted you on this board. I was appalled when I sat here last week and heard that almost 30%, roughly 30% of the high school enrollment is failing. This is beyond unacceptable. There are students that you're on this board to represent first and foremost, that you, you are failing. We are once again, we are once again asking for a choice. Please, please let us show everyone how awesome our students are, and they can follow the guidelines second place. Yes, there's those that want to stay home. Yes, there's those that need to be in school. This failure rate is unacceptable. When that day comes that we're allowed back in these doors, that day, these kids can be proud to be a parent.
And that is all of our speakers.
Thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second it.
Roll call vote, please.
Yep. I may guess, Ms. Branstow?
Yes.
Mr. Baxter?
Yes.
Hi, Corporal.
Hi.
Ms. Gordon?
Yes.
Ms. Dillsaber?
Yes.
And Ms. Green?
Yes.
Somehow we have passed.
Presentations and discussions. Kevin, would you like to move forward with that, please?
Yes. Thank you, President Gordon. Want to make sure that we recognize our principals for principal recognition month. That we have some extraordinary type of administrators who are leading our building as principals and assistant principals. Two that we've hired. One at the middle school is also helping over at Dunlop, Mr. Widener. Another who is new to the high school, or Mr. Hutchins, who brings a experience to the table to help support the high school principal who's there now, which is Tom Faber. Also want to, again, show appreciation for our middle school principal, Ms. Stephanie Bruce, who is also new, a team that is working very hard with our staff in order to move things forward. And a new principal that is at Dunlop, excuse me, not Dunlop. Our principal who's there at Dunlop is Sarah Newbecker, who is returning. And a new principal at Purdy, which is Sarah Taylor, who has been working as an assistant at Dunlop for the last couple of years, or few years or so, and now she's taken over at Purdy. And at Norpean, our new principal, Courtney Coats. All of these members of our administrative team that are running the buildings as principals, we want to recognize you this month. As we have found that, you know, this is a very difficult time to shake hands and show our appreciation, as we will be looking for, which would be punching cookies, we are going to delay our opportunity for congratulations for the work well done and the hard work that you do. And I mentioned that, just as we've delayed our teacher recognition, I will just add that we are going to, not wait any longer to recognize our teachers next month. And we will be sending out information for those teachers who are retired. And then as we move into the new year, we'll make an opportunity to also recognize our principals, and hopefully in another type of setting where we can bring them in. So we truly appreciate their hard work, and the staff they're building, and the direction that our schools are headed, and that they continue this work as we move forward.
Thank you, Kevin. We had a parent that sent an email and asked that it be read.
That is correct. Ms. Tammy, did you get that email? I was hoping that you would have read that like you did last week. And if we, you want that email to be read at this point, or at the last public comment?
Well, I think that she was intending it to be read before the preparedness plan.
Good point. I will, I could actually pull it up, and I could read it also.
Mr. Simmons, if you want to send it to me or forward it to me...
Simmons, if you want to send it to me or forward it to me, I can read it.
Okay. Take this.
Did you get the attachment with it?
I'm still waiting for, just a little bit, so. School Board, I would like to address some concerns with the current situation with online schooling. I have three children that attend Penfield and have since kindergarten. I have two in high school and one in sixth grade. My children come from a home with a mother and a father who help and support them. My husband and I both work full-time in healthcare and have since the beginning of the pandemic in March. I would like the board to know what our experience has been like. I have witnessed these past six weeks a decline in my children's education and mental health. As a parent, I have made the time to listen in on Zoom calls and assist with assignments. Online schooling sounds really great, and everyone wants to pretend it is going well. I can only speak for what is happening in my home, but it is not going well. It is not working. I am invested in my children, and I make an effort to make sure they are on their calls and get their work done. Hang on, look at that school. I also signed up for conferences in the form of each teacher. The fact is, my children are struggling. My high schoolers couldn't care less about school, and that makes me sad. Let me tell you about my children. First, my sophomore, he is in honors classes and has always had a GPA that is vested in school. I have watched his grades decline since March. He went from a 3.7 GPA to now a 1.8. Prior to COVID, he was class president, an active band member, and active in student council. In fact, he has been the only boy in his grade to actively participate in student government since sixth grade. He is a type of child who is a go-getter. Since being out of school, he has quit band and expressed he no longer wants to be part of student government. He also couldn't care less about attending school. He has lost his drive and ambition. Anyone that knows my son knows that this is not his character. I am worried about isolation, depression, and his lack of enthusiasm. Next, my senior, he just wants to be done. He does not want to participate in any activities he could care less. This makes me very sad for him, because this is supposed to be the best year of his high school years. And then there is my sixth grader. I have watched her struggle on a daily basis with the online learning. Since the first day of school, each day has ended in near tears or full-on frustration and tears. I'm doing everything I can to support her, but it is not enough. As a mother, I feel like I am failing her. I started assisting with her during her classes and helping her with organization and time management. I learned that online schooling is four days a week and a typical class is anywhere from three to 45 minutes, depending on teacher and day. I was shocked when one of her classes consistently lasted a total of three minutes. The teacher saying that there was nothing to do and dismissed the class after three minutes. What are they learning? This class consistently meets for three to five minutes, and then the teacher lets them go. She has all A's and B's, except for this class. She is failing. As a parent, this is very frustrating, and this is not acceptable. With that said, I would like to express that overall, the teachers are doing an amazing job. I know this is not easy for them as well, and I give them lots of kudos for their hard work. I would like to ask the school board, have any of you sat with any of the students, to evaluate how the online learning is going. If you haven't, how can you vote fairly? How do you know online school is working? What are your, you basing your vote on? If you have not witnessed online school in person, I would encourage you to do so. This frustration is coming from a household with two parents, stability and resources available. My heart breaks for the students who do not have the support in their homes. My heart breaks for the single parents who are trying their best to help their children. I can't imagine they are learning anything. I can't imagine the isolation and loneliness. COVID is here, the numbers are rising, and everyone is scared. As a nurse, we have tested and treated many COVID patients. My husband and I have worked endless hours through this pandemic since March. The data shows the numbers are rising in Calvin County, but the strain has mutated, and although more people are getting COVID, it seems less severe. The virus is not going away, just like influenza, whooping cough, hepatitis, and many other infectious diseases. We need to get these children back in school. Their mental health is at risk, and their education is at risk. I am at the point I am more concerned about keeping children out of school than COVID. Another question I would ask the board, if the state of Michigan has opened up school in person, why hasn't Penfield opened? Why have other local schools been allowed to open and succeed? Please help me understand this. I do respect the parents who are afraid or concerned for their health and do not want to send their children to school. That is their choice. I am asking the school board to reconsider this decision and let parents have a say within school and learning. Let us make the choice to send our children to school. It is time. Give our children the proper education they need to help them succeed. Please consider their mental health as well, and not just focus on the COVID and the data. I am a proud parent of three Penfield Panthers and have always supported the school, but the school board, Penfield is failing our children. She has seven questions for the school board. What data and research are you basing your vote on? How have you done your research? Are you looking at the data for other schools going on in person? Michigan.gov school reporting. Number three, online learning, has any of the school board members been pressed to evaluate how this is working? If not, how can you base your decision if it is working? What are you basing your vote on? Number four, how can K5 have a choice but not 612? Five, why can't the parents decide on sending their child or not? Please give us a choice. Six, has any data been reviewed on mental health issues for our children? And seven, what percentages of students are ineligible for scores or failing at least one class?
Thank you for your time, as I know this is not a decision to take lightly. Respectfully, Becky Lewis, our.
Thank you, Becky, and thank you, Tammy, for reading that. I want to also thank all of our principals and all their hard work, and welcome all of our new administrators. 5.02 bond 2021. Kevin, did you want to touch on that and then have Craig interdict on or?
I think that we'll ask Mr. Corporal, as Craig, to share out what the core team's information base on the actual survey and the thinking around the second survey that will go out. And just as a reminder, Mr. John Kavanaugh, I got it right, Mr. Kavanaugh is here tonight, and we're going to ask him, as members of the board have questions, after a brief summary of what you could share, Mr. Corporal, Dr. Corporal, and then would ask that John be available to answer questions. Oh, also tonight, we have King Scott, Mr. David Martin, he's also here. Mr. Corporal?
Yes, thank you, Superintendent Simmons. Our core team has been gathering for the last few months, looking at an inventory of all of the district needs, and we're at that point right now where we're in need of additional information from our constituents of the district. And as a result, the core team has decided that it would be something to recommend to the board, that we look at a survey of between 250 and 300 people in the district, chosen randomly and stratified for good scientific sampling, so that the core team of Superintendent Simmons, President Borden, Trustee Bronson, and I can assist with the, with the steering group to make a better decision regarding the need for future funding for the, for the district's facilities. And with that, I'll leave it to our guest speaker, who is a pro in the, in the area, and you'd be able to give us an idea, give, provide the board with a better idea of what this survey will look like. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Corporal.
Good evening. I'm John Kavanaugh from Epic MRA. Our firm has been doing public opinion survey research officially as a corporation since 1992. Been involved in public opinion research well before that. Our firm is an oath and growth of a partnership that was formed in 1985. The bulk of our work involves testing public opinion for school districts, intermediate school districts, community colleges, on questions placed before the voters, typically a bond issue. And we have done that throughout the entire state in all shapes and forms, from a billion-dollar bond proposal for Ann Arbor Public Schools to a few million dollars in some of the smaller school districts in northern lower Michigan and then the upper peninsula. And I'm here primarily to answer any questions you might have if you decide to move forward with a survey. I've done a little bit of background research on the district. With approximately 7,000 registered voters living in around 3,000 households, I would not recommend the sampling of any larger than 250, maybe a little bit more up to 300. It becomes inefficient, and I can guarantee you that your board members would be receiving a lot of phone calls from irritated people if we tried to get much higher than that. I am confident with that sample size, however, in terms of providing statistically reliable data. We like to measure not only the yes, no on a specific substantive question, but also try to measure some of the, what's the atmosphere in which you're operating, what are attitudes about specific items concerning the school district, not only of immediate concern, but of a more general nature, and then move into maybe prioritizing what the public thinks about the need for a variety of different items that would be financed by a bond. And in this way, it can give the board some guidance in terms of what is and is not acceptable to majorities, and just as important, within subgroups of, for instance, parents of students versus non-parents, older adults versus younger adults, et cetera. They say we've been doing this for some time, and have come up with a pretty decent blueprint for how we go about doing it. The longest, most protracted portion of the project is the back and forth between our firm and representatives of the district, so we can hammer on a survey instrument that is, not only gets it the information that we want to find, but also does it in as unbiased a manner as possible, so that we end up with a survey instrument that everybody's satisfied with. From there, we move on to live telephone operator interviews, and then compiling the data and preparing a report. That's a very broad brush of how we go about conducting these types of surveys. And had a little bit of initial conversation, enough to show up here and give you this brief overview, and to welcome any questions at all from board members who would like me to drill down a little bit deeper, if that's, that's what you'd like.
So, so if I may, John, I'm going to share just the big picture. We started down the road of a school bond, and then we said we didn't get enough information, the board didn't feel comfortable about moving forward. So, now the board is getting closer to that decision time again, is if we even need to have some information to move forward. So, a survey by a professional company as Epic MRA is the question that is at hand, is asking the board for their approval for this survey to move forward. Now, it is not the only survey, because this survey is one that would be used with registered voters in Penfield. Another survey that will be aligned with the same that Epic MRA is going to utilize won't come out until a couple of weeks after this survey has been completed, and it will come out with the district newsletter as an attachment, so that not only the parents and all of the community members in Penfield, but also the school of choice parents would get that survey, and we'd be able to take a look at them both. However, this is a company that has done numerous types of professional surveys of communities and for bonds, for school bonds, and so that is the reason that John is here tonight, is to answer questions about how that survey works with any of our members who haven't been a part of that core team.
I have one question. Why would we, so, I can't imagine that it would be too big of a question what kind of a response we would give if we asked people to put a bunch of money into empty buildings. I just feel really strongly that it would be a waste of money to do a survey before we have kids back in school. It's just like, I'd be out of it if you can.
Understood.
I have a question. Just, just if I'm reading this right, the minimum cost for 250 samples to do this, $15,000 right now? Correct. I would agree with that.
I guess the question for, have you done any of these kinds of surveys for the board while we've built the program?
I believe we have in Tecumseh School District, Illinois County, we just got in the field with our, in the midst of doing Lakeview, mistaken, and we have done extensive research for Rochester Schools in Open County beginning last June, and a couple of others. It is, you raise a legitimate point in terms of questions about facilities when not all of them are occupied. However, training the question with an eye toward post-COVID assists a lot in framing, creating a frame of reference for responses.
Any, any other questions? I know Mr. Baxter, Ms. Still saber, the Alicia, and Ms. Bronson, and Dr. Corporal have also stood at the table with. have also sat at the table with President Fortin. So that is the reason that they haven't got any additional questions at this time?
I guess I would have a question for the committee. And, you know, not trying to be disrespectful, I'm just confused about the timing. So maybe the committee would be able to help me understand what they think the benefit would be of having a survey for a bond on school improvements while the building is empty.
I understand your question, Abby, and I've had the same question in the committee meetings. One of the answers to that is to improve, one of the things that would be on this bond is to improve our air control in our buildings. And, you know, we all know that COVID is not going to go away. We're going to have to be able to learn to live as safely as we can. And that includes bringing our kids back into our buildings and needing the good air quality, which is going to cost more than what we have in our general fund, you know? So we would need a bond to move forward with that.
So is that going to be the way that's communicated? That those are the kind of things that are going to be a focus of what the bond is going to be used for?
That is one of the big focuses.
If I might, typically how we structure the area is ten some general overall attitude questions about the district performance, et cetera. And then present the board and administration are considering placing before the voters a proposal that will do the follow and raise X number of dollars, which vote yes or no. Refer to that as a cold question, very little information. And then line up after that, irrespective of what you just told me, here are some items that would be paid for. And then X, Y, and Z, one of those items would be refurbishing the air handling systems of all facilities that have cost us X number of dollars. You support or oppose that portion of the proposal? Adding a room for whatever the components tend to turn out to be. We'll list about a half a dozen to 10 of those with a price tag attached. Be a supporter or opposed to that portion of it. And then take a revote. Now let me know a little bit more about what the money would be spent on. Let me ask you again, if a proposal were placed and you had to vote today, would you vote yes or no on the proposal? If interview length allows, then also line up supporters and opponents' arguments and take the final vote. Now looking for all the reasons to support and all the reasons to oppose and the things that would be the money would be spent on. Let me ask you a final comment. Would you vote yes or no? Again, interview time permitted for the argument section.
Sure. That's quite all right.
And if I could just follow up, this is something that for those of us who are concerned about athletic facilities, roofs that are potentially in need of great repair, those are the types of things that the community in the post-COVID period needs to be aware of as well. So I would just say that those are some of the additional items that I would add to President Fortin's response to you as well, Abby.
Thank you, Craig. Those are the kind of things that I assume we're going to be asked about and had thought about that you're handling. I just think that while the building is empty, it's, you're going to get a different response than you are if it's actually being used.
Understood. Thank you.
Is there a timeline that this has to be completed by in order to be usable for the decision?
Well, I forgot to mention that we also have Mr. McDonald, Todd McDonald is also here with CSN. And the timelines, if I remember correctly, that, oh, I think I'm going to have to ask Mr. Martin to come forward to talk about what that timeline was as to what the first steps are and what we need second. Thanks, John.
Thank you, Kevin. So currently, we've been talking about a May 2021 bond election. Those of you that were involved with the committee prior to this qualification will recall we looked originally at an November 2020 bond election, but there wasn't enough information for the committee to feel comfortable in recommending to the board to move forward. That puts it in default mode to look at 21 months of May, which then requires Department of Treasury pre-qualification meeting, which is currently scheduled January 7th, I believe. And they need the documents from us known later than December 30th, which would determine the scope of the project. So that's kind of why the committee got to the point of needing the community survey in order to get out there and get a pulse on what the committee, the community would prefer.
Does that help with the reason that? Was a question for the timing?
I understand.
Okay. Thank you. Any additional questions? Because I would be asking the board for the approval. And therefore, that would have to be turned over to President Fortin to see if that's going to be acceptable or not to move forward.
Would someone like to make a motion for the approval of a survey company, Epic?
I would like to make a motion that the board approve a contract with Epic MRA for the amount to not exceed $16,000 for a survey to be done in the next month.
I need a second.
I will support it.
Okay, I'll take a vote. Not present. Ms. Reed? Mr. Baxter?
Yes.
Ms. Bronson? Ms. Bronson? I'm in on it. Ms. Fortin? Ben President Fortin?
No.
Ms. Del Saver? Ms. Del Saver?
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am. And Doctor.
Aye.
The motion passes for three.
Thank you. And our last presentation and agenda item that I am presenting tonight is the MDE Prepartness Plan. And I only have one thing that I asked that I have an opportunity to read. The, I sent this to the school board members earlier this past weekend. And it is a letter that is sent to my attention from the Calhoun County Public Health Department. It was also a meeting that was held Friday before this letter came out with all of the area superintendents in Calhoun County. And then it was addressed to each. Some of the other districts have already sent out communications, but this is a two paragraph letter that I am going to read from the department. It was sent out on October 16th, 2020 to Kevin Simmons Superintendent, Penfield Public School District. It's from Mr. Eric Petzel, who is the health officer. Regarding the Calhoun County Public Health Department recommendation for Penfield Public School District. Kevin, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. As you are aware, Calhoun County, the state of Michigan, and most states around the country are experiencing a surge and COVID-19 cases counts and hospitalizations are on the rise. Locally, we are experiencing an increase in cases and hospitalizations. Specifically, on September 25th, the county case count was 1,180. On October 2nd, it was 1,372. October 9th, 1,579. And October 16th, 1,913. The daily hospital COVID patient counts on the same dates were 8, 8, 15, and 25. Our most recent data shows that from the dates of September 29th to October 12th, Calhoun's 14-day percent positive average was 5.9%. And the 14-day case per million average was 223.6. To date, we have not had any outbreaks associated with a school. After a review of our current case count and our substantial increase in our hospitalizations, we do not recommend changing instruction method that would increase the number of students that would be in school buildings daily. Bringing more students together at this time may lead to further contributions to our current surge in cases and hospitalizations. Even though we have not experienced any in-school transmission of the virus, now is not the time to change. Therefore, my recommendation is for Penfield Public School District to proceed status quo. We will review our county data with you in approximately 30 days. And if COVID cases are declining, especially our hospitalizations, we may lift this current recommendation. Please be advised that at this time, should we experience transmission of virus within a school building or buildings, we may recommend further reduction of in-person instruction. Please let me know if you have any further questions or concerns. President Fortin, I appreciate you allowing me the opportunity to read that letter. Tomorrow, there will be a communication that will go out to the community that will specify this information based on any information that comes from the board based on the MDE plan that we have in place right now. Thank you.
Now would be the time, if anyone has a motion to present to the board for our MDE plan and the change of that, or the non-change of that, now would be the time.
John, President Fortin, could I ask a question about that letter first? Would that be okay?
Sure.
I did have a question about, had you talked, you've talked to the health department about this?
That's correct.
So I have a question about, he's saying he recommends not coming back right now.
Correct.
And he's going to review it in 30 days.
Correct.
He also says that it's a recommendation, but I'm assuming that carries way heavier than a recommendation? It's like not allowed?
Correct.
I don't, I'm trying to understand how it's.
The health department realizes that it is a board's decision. However, the recommendation that they're making is to say that there's 30 days from now because every 30 days is the Prepartness Plan, comes back for review based on the House bills, House Bills 5911, 5912, 5913. So those come up every 30 days to where we have to show what type of academic progress. Then we have to talk about the two-way communications. That information comes every 30 days. Now, that would be the next board meeting, which would be in November. So that is the reason why that recommendation has been made. And they also made the same recommendation to the Calhoun Career Center also.
So then my, my follow-up question to that is, it would, could the board make a decision today to make that, to open up in 30 days and give you that one month's planning time to do that? Would that be an option that we can make?
Yes.
Okay. Then I have another question. Are there teachers that are willing to come back?
Yeah, we have.
Six through 12.
Oh, I'm sorry. We have, I mean, that's wrong. When the board makes a decision, as they did on August 10th, the teaching staff in this administration move forward with the recommendation and the plans that are approved by the board. And therefore, that is what we do.
Yeah.
So as far as teachers, teachers will do what the board says is approved.
And I might be putting you in an unfair position, but I understand that they're, they are very professional. They're going to do their job to get there. My question really is, do you know if there are teachers that want to come back?
Yes, because I sent out a survey that actually showed that there was a small percentage of teachers who said they would want to come back.
Okay. Thank you. Question.
Kevin, since we're talking about this letter, maybe you can answer it. I don't know.
Sure.
Two things stood out for me in the letter. One was that there was a statement made by him that there had not been any outbreaks associated with a school, presumably as any school within the Calhoun County Health Departments. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So they further state in the same letter that we'll review our county data after 30 days and especially our hospitalizations. And we may lift this current recommendation if they're declining. And they state that. But in two separate places in here, there's another place I can read to you too. But they're saying that there hasn't been any association with any outbreaks in the school. Am I wrong in saying that?
No, you're not.
Okay. Did you ask them then? Or did anybody or any of the superintendents ask them? If that's the case, and you don't have any type of an issue within the school, why are they making a recommendation that they shut the schools down?
Yes, that was a question. The wording says outbreaks in schools. An outbreak is two or more people or students or persons that have a connection. So there have been numerous cases of positive cases and exposures where students have been quarantined and adults have been quarantined. Outbreaks, when he uses the word outbreaks, they define it as if one child in a school is connected with another child, then that becomes an outbreak, saying that it was because of within the school. So he actually made the comment that, yeah, we, I commend what schools are doing because we haven't had the issues like we have outside of the schools where there's been parties and weddings and gatherings that have caused the numbers to go up. He said, however, an outbreak is defined as two or more to where there's a connection. And that has not occurred. It's been all coming from the outside in, not that it was created from inside. Does that help with the answer to your question?
I think the frustration's been that we've had just as many, you know, reported cases. When you talk to the parents, you talk to people in our constituency that are saying that we're getting just as many positive cases with Penfield kids skate through, excuse me, six or 12 that aren't going to class.
Yes.
And we have the schools that are doing it. Why aren't we doing it? Do we give parents a choice? And that's been the biggest criticism. So when I look at a recommendation like this, I'm not seeing it follow anything but their own county-driven science. Not what we're trying to do with best for our students here, given especially what we heard last week with the failure rate. So that's kind of what's kind of spinning in the back of my mind is what we need to do here. So that's kind of what's kind of spinning in the back of my mind is what we need to do here. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have one more question, but I wanted to pause and make sure I'm not done. I want to ask some questions.
Sure. So trustee Green, Abby's allowing time for anyone who's virtually, who want to speak so that she doesn't seem so, she's taking up all of the time, but allowing for everyone to have input.
Thank you for the information, Superintendent Simmons.
I think you can go ahead, Abby.
Okay. Um, my next question is the PPE in the K-5 buildings. Does it seem to be working okay for the teachers?
There has, I appreciate you asking that question. I just met with the administrative staff today, and there are some stressors that are occurring because the PPE is in place. However, there are some other elements that are occurring to where we're not able to keep up with certain students and parents when it comes to kids reporting to school and we not knowing that they should be in quarantine. And instead, what we find out is after the fact because the student says, "Yeah, I'm supposed to be in quarantine," then we have to call the health department. So there is a, um, another stress piece that is there. As far as the PPE, absolutely. And we've got, um, everything that we can try to do to apply the, um, as such they supply all type of PPE that they feel is needed in order for them to be safe and for our kids to be safe. And the numbers, as you know, the numbers being as low as they are because we split to where it was Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday, Friday, it did help with the numbers in the classroom with trying to keep social distance. It is, um, it is a work in progress. We continue to try to work to keep everyone safe. We're having, the situation is coming from the outside end, kind of like what has been mentioned in the letter.
Right.
You're welcome.
President Fortin, I would be willing to make a motion if that would be appropriate.
Any other board members with any questions before Abby presents a motion?
I don't have a question, but I will, um, make a comment. And I understand some of the public's concerns with their children. And I've had a student, a son that graduated last year and lost out on a lot of things when that happened. I still have a high school student in school now. And yes, there's been some struggles with the virtual learning. As all things are new, it takes a while to get that going. And with some work on it, it's going a lot smoother now. So I understand some of those frustrations, and I know what they're missing out. But I still think the students and the safety of our staff, our employees still has to be paramount in this decision.
Thank you, Scott. Anyone else? Okay, Abby?
Okay. I would like to make a motion to go to a higher red action similar to what's currently in place for K-12, for K-5, to extend that to K-12 beginning November 18th.
I'll take the vote.
Well, I think you got it.
I gotta get a second.
I did, um, now, President.
Okay. I can't hear.
Yes, Brandon did second that.
Okay, we need a roll call on that?
But I think now we have discussion.
Do you want to then ask for discussion?
Okay, anyone? That would like to have a discussion on that?
Okay, I'll take the vote. Then I don't see any discussion when you're ready to, now, President. Just let me know when to take the vote.
I'm sorry, I'm having difficulty hearing.
Just, just let me know when to take the vote.
Yeah, go ahead, Brandon with the vote.
Okay, um, Mr. Baxter.
No.
Um, I'm a yes. Ms. Dilser.
No.
Ms. Bronson?
No.
And Corbala?
No.
Ms. Fortin?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
All right, the motion fails four to three.
I'd like to make a motion that we stay with the system that we have now and review it again at the end of the next nine weeks.
Support you, Scott.
My discussion on that would be, could we consider this review on November 18th? Once we hear again from the Calhoun County Health Department.
I can modify my proposal. I suggest we stay with the current system until the time comes that we make a vote to change it.
So I... I'm sorry.
No earlier than November 18th.
Scott?
Yeah.
I think it's fine for us to go ahead and vote on that, but, um, we probably don't have to. You're just saying you want some space before we vote again. Is that what I'm understanding?
Yeah, I mean, my original recommendation would be to do it at the end of nine weeks. We obviously are gonna be looking at it before that, but make the decision before we go into the third quarter.
The only thing, um, are we open for discussion, Dawn?
Yes.
Um, the one thing that I would just remind everybody is that, um, Superintendent Simmons asked us for at least a two-week lead time to prepare for returning to school if it was a positive vote. So if we want to change at the marking period, we would have to vote on it a couple of weeks before that. That would be my only suggestion, is that we maybe not tie it down to an exact date.
Yeah, that's fine.
My, my concern is that, uh, we're talking about, uh, moving in, uh, indoors, so to speak, uh, as we're getting closer to Thanksgiving and Christmas. And so according to science, uh, we're expecting that that's gonna result in an increase uh, in, uh, infections. And as a result of that, I think, uh, it would be better to err on the side of, uh, us waiting till the, uh, first of the year in order to consider going back, uh, to 612.
My point is for the reconsideration on November 18th. So we have time to prepare to come back so we could come back on time for the second semester, if that is what gets voted.
I think you make a valid point, Craig.
I do too, Scott and Craig.
So I guess, I, you know, if you don't want it, you can vote it down, but my, I think we should review at the end of nine weeks.
Are we still open on discussion?
Yeah.
I appreciate that, um, that the, there is evidence that, um, we are gonna continue to have infections for the next two or three or four years, whatever it is. Um, but I think the science is also, um, showing that it's mutating and becoming less viral. And at some point, I believe that, uh, we're gonna have to decide as a school whether we're gonna be able to manage it the way that we do other, um, diseases. And I'm hopeful that we'll be able to do that, balance that with, uh, um, the other health needs of the community, not just that one health need. So, um, that would be my only counter-response to the, um, concerns about the virus increasing right now. Is that there's more than one piece of science to look at, and it's not the only one.
Um, regarding, um, Mr. Baxter's motion, since we're on discussion for that, I, this is the second time that the school board by vote has chosen to ignore the parent wishes of, of this district. And you know, I think Mr. Woltersberger said it best. There were hundreds of parents that wanted us to have a choice. And four, three, you once again said, "We don't care." And that you cannot put it any more succinctly than that. I'm sorry if that's confrontational. It feels non-collaborative. Well, I'm not seeing the, the collaboration from both sides. But I'm gonna tell you right now, I agree with Abby, and I think she says a lot more diplomatically than I'm gonna say it. But, you know, when you look at the makeup of this board going into the new year, make sure you vote that way because they just voted to not give you a choice for a second time.
Scott, will you please read the motion again?
Yeah, the motion is to stay with the system that we have right now and review it again at the end of nine weeks.
Thank you.
We'll need a second for that.
I already have a second. He was reading a motion that I already seconded.
Okay, and I'll take the vote. Um, Ms. Fortin?
No.
Um, Ms. Bronson?
Yes.
Um, I am, uh, no. Mr. Baxter?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Dilser?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Green?
No.
And, uh, Corbala?
Bye.
Motion passes four to three.
Thank you, board. Moving on to 6.01 administrative reports. Kevin?
Yes, thank you, President Fortin. There are quite a few presentations, or should I say reports, there from the administrators. Um, as you get an opportunity, members, you read through those. If there are questions, um, please bring those questions to my attention through email in or a call. And then I will go back with the administrative staff and try to answer those questions. And if not able to answer and write them, actually bring them back to the board meeting for, um, supportive summary of your questions.
Thank you. 7.01 comments from the public.
There are a lot of comments.
8.01 superintendent comments.
Yes, thank you, uh, President Fortin. As, um, these are difficult times. We do understand there are not just stressors that take place on both sides of, uh, the debate that says there's not happening for, and those that speak and say that it is not happening for. We will continue to do this work. We will continue to meet the needs of our students. And then we will continue to make modifications and adjustments to try to get all of our students what they need when it comes to their academic success. I'll also share that at this time, we do know that there is a decline in the number of failures based on that data that was given at the last week's meeting. I don't know if it's due to the fact that each five weeks, as I've shared with board members, every five weeks I'll do a new, uh, deep dive into the data and find out exactly what is occurring at building levels, what is working for our kids and our parents, what is not working for our kids and our parents, and make those adjustments as needed. Therefore, I will, uh, continue to follow the guidance and the direction of our board as we try to move forward with getting that exactly what is needed for moving forward with our district. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Simmons. 9.01 board comment.
Um, President Fortin, this is Abby. We had a couple of, um, questions at the last, at the meeting of the whole. And would this be an appropriate time to just ask for follow-up on those? Or is this only for comments?
I think we'll leave this to, um, comments. If that, if that question is part of your comment.
Well, I can make it a comment instead of a question. And then Kevin can decide if he wants to respond to it. How does that sound?
That's fine.
Um, so we had talked at the last meeting, there had been some good suggestions from families, um, on some technology things that would help, um, common messaging platforms we secure consistently, um, common assignment due date time. Um, and also, um, consistent intermittent concerns about the content, the amount of content children are getting. And so I, um, I, I would like, uh, to get a report back to the whole board at some point when you have, in the next week or so, before the next meeting, and, uh, response to that, the administration's response to that, what you've done or planned in response to that. We could... Um, and then the other part of that is, I, I would like to get some, I know, I don't want specific situations, but I think we have heard enough different parents and students say enough different times that, um, different times that in certain cases, there's not very much content being delivered. And I know that you're working on that really hard and teachers are learning new things, but if we could get some turnaround stories, or that would be really nice to, because right now it feels like it's not changing. Thank you.
Thank you Abby.
Brandon? Ms. White read a letter at the beginning of this where she talked about 26 people that had, and she's referencing people that had contacted me specifically. Those are 26 people that reached out to me as a board member. What Mrs. White, or Ms. White I should say, is missing is the whole ball. Because we had hundreds of parents, a survey initially in the 70% time, that wanted to have our kids have a choice between six through 12. They were ignored. They have now been ignored again. That's what she's missing. And when we talk about whether your job is essential or not, I could list the hundreds of jobs where people are going to get up tomorrow or tonight and go to work. Because they have to. Believe me, you do have a choice, this way, as a teacher. You do not have to go to school as a teacher. You choose to do it. Nobody likes these times that we were in, but there are hundreds of us out here that had to put one foot in front of the other and bravely go out into this COVID world and work. Not sit in the basement and work it. And I'm not saying that teachers don't work hard, believe me. I think it's harder to do it virtually. I think it is absolutely harder, and it will be found out to be harder when you look forward and see us back trying to do the actual hybrid model for the high school student versus virtual. I'll wait for the statistics on that to see which works better. We still, as we sit here in this meeting, don't have concrete data as to how many of our kids are family one, two classes, how many are on the edge of family classes or where we're going to be at. I want that data by next meeting. I want to know where we're standing with this virtual model. I want to know with 100% certainty, the decisions we're voting on, like we voted on tonight, on behalf of our students and their parents, so that our voting constituency understands who's voting what way and why, and with what data.
I'd like to say something too.
I'm not talking, ma'am. If you don't mind, I'm still talking.
Thank you.
You're welcome. What I'd like to say is this. For the last several weeks, months of COVID, I fought for what I thought could be some common ground. It does not exist on this board anymore. So looking forward, consider that. I am absolutely disgusted with the way we voted tonight. Thank you. I'm not done.
Okay. Okay, you're done?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry to interrupt. I just want to make sure that it's, it's, I just want to, everyone in this district, everyone on this board, I want each and every one of you to understand my point of why I voted for this motion tonight. If I was to lose, if, if we, the school, were to lose one child, one teacher, or more to this COVID right now, it's on my shoulders. I do not want that on my shoulders. And that is the reason I'm saying we need to keep the kids home. Thank you.
Hey, this is Scott. I just want to let all you board members know, I appreciate all you guys. I know it's a heart-wrenching vote every time we do it on both sides of the decision. And it's hard for me. I know it's hard for you guys, but I appreciate you.
Craig or Alicia? As president of this board, I want to express the importance that this is a nonpartisan position. And we are getting ready for a vote, a presidential vote. Our school board slots will be on that ballot. And there's four seats open. There are 10, 10 candidates plus a write-in for those seats. I urge our community to be very clear in their research. And if we've learned anything during this time, it's the importance of our school board and its purpose in our district. Before our next meeting, that election will take place. So please, everyone, do your research. And I, I personally apologize to all of our community members that were not heard tonight. And with that, I will close the meeting, take a vote.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Oh, second. Anybody opposed, say aye otherwise. It's seven oh. All right, seven oh vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving adjourned.